Y'all good to go ahead? You started recording. Okay. Lawrence, well, I will call the meeting to order. And I guess we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance first.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are so happy to have with us Reverend Dr. Avis Williams, who's going to deliver our vacation this morning.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you all on this side. Last prayer. The God was so grateful for the beauty of this assembly. We thank you, God, for all that you do for us. We thank you for the leadership and the power of the Holy Spirit. We ask our Lord that you bless the proceedings of the council. Thank you for the leadership in our city. Thank you, God, for all the things that are done for the betterment of Oxford. Thank you for our safety and those who are concerned with how our city operates and is fiscally sound and taking care of everything. Thank you even for our legal folks who take care of us if something comes up. But, Lord, we ask that you bless this agenda, that the agenda is all-inclusive, that it's equitable. And we just thank you for everyone here. And thank you for the discussions that will follow tonight. And we ask that you bless everyone, all the homes that are represented from all of our boundaries in this city. In Christ's name always we pray. Amen.
I told you, God, I sat down before I said the question. My apologies. I asked for a motion to accept the agenda.
I'm motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right. Is it a substantive? I guess the main announcement this year, if y'all have not heard from social media or from the newspaper, et cetera, we found out that Doug Hicks will be leaving Oxford College as the dean and will be moving on to become the president of Davidson College, which is his undergraduate alma mater. And so, obviously, we will miss Doug and really appreciate his leadership and the partnership that we've strengthened under his administration here. And we wish him all the best at Davidson. So, sorry to lose a neighbor, but certainly wishing him all the best with his next endeavors. Any other announcements? Maybe just real quickly, we will have a public hearing at the work session, which is 14 days from now. Is that May? What date is that?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. And that will be the live of a public hearing at the front end of the meeting. It's required as part of our updating of the conference and plan. And Councilman Wyndham is heading up the committee, the City Committee, to guide the update. And so, we will have the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission here with us and go through some public hearing aspects that explain what's going to happen as we update that plan. So, anything you had to say on that?
Well, it's actually on May ninth.
Oh, it's on May ninth?
Yes.
Next Monday? Okay. Sorry, it's not before the word is this? My apologies. Correct. May ninth? Next Monday?
Seven p.m. May ninth.
Technically, it is before the work session.
Just a week before.
But we also have a public hearing before the work session for budgets.
And then we'll have, you're right, we will have a public hearing before the work session on the budget, which is also required.
You said that was seven o'clock?
The May ninth is the session.
Seven o'clock.
And then, May sixteenth will be actually at six.
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 For the public hearing.
Sorry, six o'clock for the public hearing? Sorry. No, that's all right.
The comprehensive work plan is on way tonight, which is one week from tonight at seven o'clock here.
At seven o'clock. Here.
Then we'll worry about the ones after then.
Thank you. Right.
Yes, Monday?
Even I was confused.
At this point, I'll open it up for any citizen comments or concerns. If anyone from the committee would like to speak.
Before we skip that, just a minute for our previous work session. We did nail the agenda to approve. There's one little error I need to correct, have to correct.
Okay. We'll need to amend the, we accept them as part of the consent agenda, so we'll just need to go back and...
Yeah, we never did call for it, so...
Well, I made a motion to accept the agenda, which includes the consent agenda, which includes all the meeting minutes. But I don't, we haven't done this in a while, so that's fine.
Okay, sorry about that. Anyway, that's just, I just want to accuse one little error I would like to have repaired.
Is it substantive? Should we go ahead and address it?
No, I mean, it's just, no, it's not substantive. I mean, it's just, they should have said not, they didn't say not. So, I mean, I'll talk to, I'll talk to, that's all.
Okay. All right.
I think you say grammar.
It's a grammar.
Well, not really. I said something was what it was, and I said it was not what it was. That's a big difference.
Yes.
Yes, no.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Yes, sir.
Don't we have to read, accept that motion on that?
Yeah, I suppose, like, we need to re, yeah, remove, to accept the meeting minutes, we'll specifically call it meeting minutes from the work session. Is it the April eighteenth or the twenty-third? The April eighteenth meeting is noted by Councilman Hall. We get a motion to amend the meeting minutes of April eighteenth as requested by Councilman Hall.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you. Point of order. Shift that. Now, we'll open up the mic for any citizen concerns. Anybody from the committee who'd like to speak. Since I'm seen bump rushing the mic, we will move forward with the last. I did that out of here. Next is the FY 2022 electric, or power line tree trimming. We, as you will recall, we do annual tree trimming to keep the trees off the power lines. Saves us on line losses and damage in storms, et cetera. And we are piggybacking, well, we have historically piggybacked with the City of Covington's contract. We talked about this in the work session. So, at this point, we're just asking for approval of the signing of a contract with Burford Tree City for FY 2022 electric line trimming, which we anticipate being done between now and 30th of June for a total of $45,000, which will cover 25% of the city's system. And motion to accept the...
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I got one question. What did we pay last year? Because the last time I remember, we were paying $25,000.
It's $35,000.
Was it last year we paid $25,000?
It was, yes, sir. This was been set out for several years, but we're not getting a whole quarter of the system trimmed for that amount, so we'll...
No problem. I just had in my mind exactly where we were.
It was thirty-five.
Yes, we increased it to make sure we could get the whole 25% of the city done this time this year.
No problem.
Thanks for listening. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Next is the reclassification and signing of pay rates for current administrative positions. We discussed at the work session. The staff asked for reclassification of two positions in the clerk's office. Changing administrative clerk, pay grade eleven to a sergeant clerk, pay grade twelve. And deputy billing slash municipal court clerk positions that are pay grade thirteen to associate clerk, pay grade twelve. As discussed, they had a motion to accept this request. I'm moving to re-accept your question.
Second.
Got a second from Lawrence. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Next is the purchase of new financial software and budget amendment. Do you want to speak to this motion about this?
Okay. I didn't have that pulled up, so, just a second.
But just as, on the agenda, we talked about the, we anticipate the cost of this upgrade to be just under $100,000. We will require amending our budget to be able to fund that with existing FY 22 funds in our capital budget.
Yes. And I sent some additional information to everyone over the weekend. Did y'all receive that?
Yes.
Did anybody, it was attempting to answer the questions people had from last time.
Did the questions get addressed? And do you have any further questions?
Yes.
Stacy and I, honestly, it's a draw for us. So, I guess basing, I guess we can go back to basing our selection on money. And that choice is BSNA, and they also have, seem to have a better reputation as far as customer service from the comments that we received.
And that is the service that Covington is using currently?
Correct.
Actually, I noticed from one of your, I guess you call references, a young lady from, I believe it was LaBona, Auburn, Georgia, I believe. She had worked with both of the particular programs, and she liked the BS and A better.
Yes, sir.
We also have someone in our office that is also working that program.
Yes, yes. One of our current employees who used to be at the City of Covington.
Right, okay. Thanks.
Okay. So, our recommendation is BSNA, and we would like to pay for the, the one-time cost is $109,325. But then their annual maintenance cost is the lowest of the three. So, we would like to pay that one-time cost out of fiscal year '22 money. And if that's approved, we'll have the actual budget amendment. We'll have several budget amendments at the due meeting, so that will be part of that.
Okay. So, if y'all are okay, we'll go ahead and move for, ask for a motion to approve the purchase of the financial software.
So moved.
No, as recommended by our, so moved by...
So moved.
All seven.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dave, just a point before you move.
Sorry, yes, sir.
I have no objection to what we just done.
Yes, sir.
But if we're spending $100,000 this year, you can remove the 2023 request of $100,000?
Yes. No, you're absolutely right.
That's correct.
We weren't sure we were going to do that, but now we will make that amendment to the draft capital budget. Thank you. Which is good, because it's, we'll hit.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay. Next is the Atkins Master Service Agreement. We discuss the entering into a master service agreement with Atkins to help us manage several major projects in the city. Signing this master service agreement does not obligate us to spend any money. It just gets us into contract with them. And then each individual project, we will bring forward for your review, the scope and budget. And then, if there's, well, general program management, we'll bring forward a proposal specific to that as part of our normal processes. So, it's just to enter into that master service agreement, get that contract in place.
And I also sent out the rate schedule over the weekend.
Yes.
As additional information.
Thank you. Are y'all comfortable with going ahead and having a motion to enter into the, or to sign the master service agreement with Atkins? Is that a motion from Lawrence?
I'll make the motion.
Michael, second. Okay. Any further discussion?
I'd be glad if Mr. Wyndham had come by my office today asking about this opportunity, I guess. And I thought it might be helpful just to kind of show me, one of the main priorities that really started this ball rolling was the application for the driving in Creek funds, $900,000. So, what's been so strange about it, the part that, I'm going to hand this out and realize it's going to be hard to see if I'm walking through it, that the document without the comments is literally the entire application. It's basically a page and a half that Matt submitted to the congressman's office, which resulted in us receiving the $900,000. So, the document itself is labeled as a, I think the name of the document is like DOT underscore THUD. And I was like, what is a THUD? So, I went to Google, and it's Transportation, Housing, and Urban Development, basically. And so, what was strange is when I did contact the congressman's office, they didn't know which agency these funds will eventually be funneled through. But of those THUD, we're assuming it has to be Transportation or GDOT. And that's, I have some familiarity with this, because we did the exact same thing in Hall County with Congressman Deal's office, when he was a congressman, not the governor. So, we got about, I think it was $6 million in an earmark for literally a trail, bike pedestrian trail in Hall County. So, it went through GDOT. And I can tell you that GDOT is not happy to see these funds, because what happens is, my understanding is, there's a big number that GDOT gets. Let's say it's a billion dollars or something. This $900,000 kind of comes out of their cut, and it's something they've got to deal with that wasn't part of their plan, isn't part of their interest, and so, they don't really care to have to deal with it. So, they're not usually real cooperative with it. So, all that's to say that all we had to go on was this one document. And what I did today is just kind of based on Mr. Wyndham's comments marked up, and I talked with some of the concerns with it we've discussed with Atkins. So, the first thing is kind of what I've already discussed there, the comment number one, just the fact that this is going through the THUD. And right now, the congressman's office is just telling us, we need to wait until this settles into someone in the department to contact us about, you know, how we're going to go about satisfying all the different regulations. But we're anticipating it being GDOT. And Atkins actually has a former GDOT official who's retired and works with them, and already has contacted her as of last week, and she's kind of digging down into GDOT to see what their thoughts are about the use of these funds and all that. And it's important, because if you notice comment number four at the bottom, he wrote the word no, this is Matt writing, does the project require environmental review? And somehow, he put no. And everyone is flummoxed by that, because any use of federal funds typically requires, you know, a NEPA document, or like, you have to do an environmental assessment and show that there's no impact. You have to do what's called environmental impact statement. I've got that talked about on comment number five on the next page. And I don't know if he thought that the planning environmental review that's being done by Northeast Georgia is going to satisfy that, or we're not really sure. But the environmental review being done by Northeast Georgia is not a NEPA and won't be issuing an environmental impact statement. So, the environmental impact statement can't really be done until you've got design worked on, obviously, because they can't tell you what the impact is going to be unless they know what you're going to be building. And so, those things right there mean that the other things he's written about timeframes is concerning to us, because there's a couple of things that reference time. One is, can the project obligate all proportion, proportion funds within 12 months of the enactment? And he's written, yes. That's probably true, but I kind of looked up, what does obligating mean and all that? I mean, we could probably obligate the funds, but we won't have them spent. Now, he is saying that we could have them spent. I believe he mentions a number of months in here. I think it was like sixteen to eighteen months, I don't know if anyone sees it. But, yeah, sixteen to eighteen months after the notice to proceed is what he's written down there in yellow, highlighted. So, sixteen, eighteen months is a pretty fast turnaround based on the need for the environmental and everything else that will have to be done, comments and all that. So, I guess what we felt is that Atkins would have the horsepower and the knowledge to kind of get this moving. So, now, I will say that if we use Atkins through this process, any of the $900,000 can't be used to pay them. But we had never anticipated that anyway, because that's kind of the other comment here is that they estimated the project would be $900,000. And in comment two, I mentioned that we feel it's probably closer to 2.1. So, therefore, we want to use all of the $900,000 for construction, and we'd be paying Atkins separately. But we won't know what that budget is until we decide if we want to do a task order with them. So, the mayor's correct. The actions we're taking to enter into the master service agreement just creates the framework for us to act with them later. And rather, you know, Mr. Wyndham was asking, what are the priorities? What do we really want to get them working on as soon as possible? And obviously, it's this project, Driving in Creek, and the other is, you know, any kind of roadwork associated with Project Jane. We've reached out to Covington and the county to see, like, are we going to be part of their design process? Can we piggyback on what they're doing? And they really haven't indicated they have seen that being true. At least, it's what I think they've told so far. So, and as I think y'all may know, it took us three meetings to finally get them to even acknowledge that this project existed, and they put a budget together for it. So, maybe we're kind of on our own looking to get that roadwork done, or at least the design done or something. So, that may or may not be another task order, but if it is, we'll want to act on it rather quickly, because of the timing there. And then I felt the third really major project is just getting this complete streets design for eighty-one, for Emery Street, that GDOT can accept. So, and I can just tell you from personal experience working with Brian Bolick and the team that they have, their philosophy, I think, fits in well with understanding traffic calming and exactly what we're looking for in this community. So, but again, that would be something we could look at separately. And we could certainly bid it out if we wanted to. It's just a question of time and all that. But I mean, just as an example, and I didn't time this to make this argument, you know, I'm not here to argue for this one or the other. I just think it's the best thing to do. But Brian, who's, you know, their senior vice president, has called me today. He's just going into work, and he knew I was out of town Wednesday through Friday. And he called me this morning and just said, hey, I've been thinking over the weekend about these issues. And, you know, I got out my sticky note, made some comments. And I guess I just feel that we won't be getting that type of personal attention from the senior vice president with Kekton Wood or, you know, any other company that I'm familiar with, just because I know Brian, and he's known him for a number of years. And he just tends to kind of, I mean, he, we talked for, oh, three hours the other day, maybe one day, but if you skipped lunch, he just kind of went solid for three, four minutes. And he just has a certain passion about communities like this and senior vice president.
Yes, sir.
I've got two more, if you don't mind. First of all, we won't, I don't think we have anybody, as Jeff said last week, about who, you know, we won't have anyone that has contact with Kekton Wood, et cetera, et cetera, that's built, and you have with Atkins. But I'd also think that, if possible, amend the budget, the motion, so that we can put this project number one, because we have those funds committed from the feds. And that is an environmental project, and it has taken precedent over almost anything else we have been trying to do. And that's just my thought. Thank you.
Just real quick, we are, we did discuss with them putting, and they're kind of in the process of putting together a proposal on specifically designing the trail project and managing the various review processes that are going to be necessary. Some of that's going to be a necessary discovery to figure out to what extent we're going to have to do environmental review. But, so they would, we do anticipate that coming forward, you know, pretty quickly under this master service agreement. Is that what you mean, is like, go ahead and say that's going to be our number one project under the...
Not exactly, because you, as I heard you a while ago, you said this does not commit us to anything with them. We just enter into a contract.
Doesn't commit us to funding, yes.
But if time is of the essence with this project, as indicated by this commitment, because this is a commitment from the previous city manager to Hank Johnson's office. That's my understanding of it, is that...
That's what we understand, that's sort of the, now, whether GDOT looks at a different timeline once they tell us what their process is, we don't know. But right now, the city is committed to this, this particular framework.
That's all the more reason that we need somebody that has contact with DDOT. And so, in my mind, since you haven't said what you said, then it would either in a separate motion or an amended motion, we need to move forward on this project.
Oh, I was just going to say additionally, showing forward momentum and spending will help our GOSP grant, which is the serious big money.
And we would anticipate them helping with that, because we've got to have, you know, our environmental review documentation for that as well. And then, yeah, so, in the draft capital budget, what was contemplated is that the Georgia Outlook Stewardship Program funding doesn't actually get final approval until like the summer of the following year. So, probably would be in FY '24 funding. So, we would be looking, we've got budgeted money already for $250,000. That's going to fund the initial design work and review, and then we'll know from that point what the budget needs to be for the GOSP grant, adding into the $900,000. And we can use the $250,000 as part of our matching funds for the GOSP, depending on how much we're going to need to ask for. If we need to ask $30,000, then we'll need some additional funds into FY '24 budget probably.
I'm just assembling, Lawrence, you mentioned that this is a federal grant. Am I correct?
Well, it's earmarked, but yes, sir. This will be handled as a grant, we believe, for GDOT.
I'm just kind of confused. If it's a federal grant, and you mentioned it's coming out of GDOT's money, how is it coming out of GDOT's money if it's a federal grant to the city? I thought the one we got for South England Creek this recently through Johnson's office was a part, I assume, of this infrastructure deal that had way in it. I'm assuming that that's where that came from. And I'm wondering why would it feed itself as part of GDOT money?
Well, it's an earmark in the federal budget, so a congressman, used to, this was done all the time, and then it was stopped, I don't know, about fifteen or so years ago, where the Congress stopped doing any earmarks at all. So, this is a recent restarting of that program. So, a congressman basically is each given a certain amount of money that they can expend or assign to their district out of the federal budget. So, it's budgeted. So, it's literally a line item. I've actually gone up and looked at them for, you can go into the federal budget, you will see a line in the federal budget that shows $900,000 for this program. And so, it's written into the federal budget, but it has to be assigned to a federal agency and then down to a state agency to administer those funds. You can't just directly give $900,000 to the City of Oxford, the federal funds. It has to go through a bureaucratic framework for legal purposes.
There has been, there is precedent, like with the recovery funding back in 2009, time for that funds, those funds were run straight from the federal government to the recipients. But with such an administrative burden for the federal government, the thinking is that the states administer, as with the recovery money that was appropriated by Congress for the pandemic, that money was actually administered by the state. So, it's similar. The state's going to give, administer the money on behalf of the federal government.
Yeah, the ARCA money came through state OPD.
So, yeah. So, it's coming from federal.
In other words, if earmark had been for, say, building a housing project, then the funds would have been, they would funnel through HUD. But in this case, because it's a transportation project, our assumption is it'll funnel through GDOT.
Okay. I'm just seeing like you said, that's going to come out of GDOT's money, like, you know, we could, lucky if we get it, it's supposed to be out of GDOT's money.
Well, no, we won't be lucky to get it. It's written into the federal budget.
I'm like saying, like, we, GDOT couldn't decide, no, we're not going to get that money.
Well, I didn't say they decide, I said they don't like it. I care, because it makes it more difficult to work with them.
Oh, okay.
So, that's all. In other words, that won't be, historically, they're not real cooperative anyway, or even less cooperative on something like this, because it's just not a part of their plan. This is what I meant.
They've got $6 billion to work with, so I can't see why the government's giving them $6 billion for roadwork.
Right.
Bridge work.
Well, and that's...
They ought to find, I have a percent for us.
Yeah, it's, I didn't mean to imply it's up to them to decide. It's just that they're concentrating on, say, building, you know, a billion dollars worth of bridges, not $900,000 project in Oxford, Georgia. So, for them, bureaucratically and staff-wise, it just is a headache. They don't like dealing with it. So, it's difficult for them to, they won't answer the calls, they won't, you know, you're going to have to light them to get it done.
I understand what you just said there, is that they're used to all those programs. They're going to concentrate on the big boys. They ought to find, I have a percent for us.
Yeah, it's, I didn't mean to imply it's up to them to decide. It's just that they're concentrating on, say, building, you know, a billion dollars worth of bridges, not $90,000 project in Oxford, Georgia. So for them, bureaucratically and staff-wise, it just is a headache. They don't like dealing with it. So it's difficult for them to, they won't answer the calls, they won't, you know, you're going to have to light them to get it done.
I understand what you just said there, is that since they're administering all those programs, they're going to concentrate on the big boys, they're going to get your look out.
Oh, God, everybody's got 10.
Any other discussion points?
Yes, sir.
So are we going to go back and revisit the motion to include what Jim was saying?
That was my question. Did you, did you say there was no, were you indicating there was no reason to amend the motion, or are you indicating that, yes, we should amend the motion so we go forward this project? Because I think you, Mike, and I, and George know from past experience, if you're doing something, it gets more done than if you're not doing something, but you're planning to do it.
Yeah. Well, I guess what I envisioned was, we were going to bring you the actual proposal forward, but we have money budgeted in the, in the capital budget for FY '22. I think we had $250,000 that we could obligate towards the Dryden Creek project to move forward with that. And all that money would be applied towards the project, once we have the full project budget. So if you want to amend that, we will start with the $250,000, $250,000 budgeted to move forward on the project. We could do that.
Well, given, in my mind at least, I don't know what everybody else says, but in my mind, we've already got over a million dollars invested in that project. So why would we not move forward? So I've done, Mike, go ahead.
I think for a clean piece of paper, Mayor, we ought to have two motions. One is to allow you to have the green work to deal with Atkins. And then a second motion to specifically ask you to initiate the Dryden Creek project.
Okay.
I have no issues with that.
Okay, great. Then we can carry forward the motion as delivered, and we can vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so a second motion on approval to move forward with the Dryden Creek project as budgeted in the capital budget for FY '22, $250,000. Second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, great. Thank you. Next item is the budget itself, which you all received. The current drafts of the budget, the capital budget, apologize for any confusion. There was a draft sent out to you all itself. You'll recognize it was shorter than the initial draft capital budget. Because as you all asked me to, I kind of went to, what do we really need to do? Still got a lot longer than I had hoped. And so that's why I really hope for you all to weigh in and see what you want to do, or how this reflects, you know, how this, yeah, this is what your reaction to it.
Well, I'm going to jump in before Jim has his.
No, please do not. Please, Captain.
I only have three or four. Okay, in previous capital budgets, we also outlined in that form where the money was coming from.
Yeah.
Because I noticed a couple of items that SLOSS is currently designated to do.
So we have, sorry, we've expended all of our SLOSS funds as the 1.5 million that we were approved for, with the exception, I believe, of the funding to public safety, because I think the radios haven't been executed yet, and we just took possession of the vehicle. So those were the two, a total of $100,000 for public safety. So we've essentially spent our 1.5 million dollars of SLOSS for 2017. And we are now receiving allocations of excess SLOSS funds. We received our first, I guess, four months' worth up to this point.
Yeah, but we also have not spent about, is it about $250,000 of transportation?
Thought we spent that on the Moore Street sidewalk we spent on.
I'm not sure. Was that before I came here?
When was it? Was it that pre-17?
No, it was in 2017.
It started in 2014 and finished up maybe in 2017.
I think we decided.
But we walked it in 2014, 2015, as I recall.
But I mean, my, my recollection was, we voted to use SLOSS because of the transportation project as the expenditure, but I don't.
I'll go back and do some checking. It could be that it just never got adjusted from the SLOSS account.
That was just my understanding. I mean, again, if there's no record of that, you know, we got the 200, we got, obviously we have the upcoming project on 81 with the sidewalk from Soul Street moving forward that's going to be, I don't know, 1.2 or more probably. So we can certainly apply it to that.
Okay.
Actually, I'm pretty sure that we, and I hope we have an accurate count of the SLOSS money and what we did with it, because we made a commitment when we go out with SLOSS, you have to use that money for what you say you're going to use it for. So I'm pretty sure that we are keeping it up correctly.
Yeah, just.
We can't just off the chair move and do something that's overdue.
No, no, no. And I was just saying that we had, one of our allocations was transportation, without specifying which transportation project, but I think it was specifying sidewalks. And I think we anticipated, you know, maybe sidewalks, 81. And we used, my, my recollection, I'm not, the records, but, I was, was that Moore Street project, which I think ended up being like 280 or, I forget. Anyway, it was a good sized project that we used SLOSS.
Our SLOSS was, as I recall, was from, with transportation, including sidewalks, trails, and roads, or streets.
Yes.
And so it very likely came out of that.
And we are allowed to use our own money and reimburse from SLOSS, and that's what we've done in the past.
And that's what I, I think that's what I, see, I think I thought. That sounds like what I recall was that we had the funds, we were getting our next allocation of SLOSS funds, and so we were going to be able to reimburse, but we may not have made that action, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll do some checking on it.
I mean, at this point, we certainly re, we have transportation projects, we can spend that money.
All right, continue.
Sorry, I had a one, there, good. See, we knocked out those others real quickly, so we got time.
We got time. Based on the conversation that you presented us with Soul Street, et cetera, and the fact that it's a hefty amount of money, and we have to come up with some money, but I believe we need to push it into next year's capital budget instead of pushing it out two years.
The, the thought was, sorry, so first of all, the item that, that you're referring to is the Soul Streets, East Soul Street improvements in FY 2024 for 3.5. Right, so that would be, the thought was that.
Nothing was going to happen.
Nothing's going to happen over the next 12 months, other than coordinating, communicating, working on what the heck was even going to be done. And that was going to have to be a conversation with GDOT, the county, city of Covington, et cetera, sort of more project management type activity. I'm sorry, and with Atkins as our support on that. So that's why it's in FY 2024.
Well, I think we need to protect ourselves and put a little bit of that, you know, into next year's capital, because things change.
Yeah, yeah.
And if we need to come up with some engineering money or something, we need a place to tap it.
Anybody have any comments on that? Does that seem like a reasonable shift, or just some finding design?
But I just am wondering about how clear the timeline is. It seems like we're, we're fighting for a fringe bit of information, and we're not clear about timeline. Maybe Covington isn't either.
The, our current understanding is a public announcement in May for, and then the anticipation of completing phase one of the development is pretty aggressive. It's by, I think, late spring, maybe summer of 2024.
Okay, then I agree with you.
Is there anything? Thank you.
Okay. So what we could do is, we could do a 10% of that 3.5 or less, you know.
I need to come up with a number.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean. At this point, we could put.
We need to build at least $500,000.
$500,000, and the 500 in the FY '23? Any comments on that? This, Mike?
Okay. Two little fluff items. We've had charging stations for some time in our, our budget. And now we're really having electric vehicles. Have we had an update of what they really cost? Because some of these things can be $25,000, $30,000 to do it correctly. The second thing is, tucked away in here is a electric mower. And usually that doesn't run on the same kind of charging system that a vehicle would. So the mower is going to cost more than $15,000, which is going to need a way to charge it.
So, sorry, most of the commercial mowers that are available now, the zero-point turn mowers, they can be charged with either a level two charger, fast track, or with a kind of traditional trickle charger, like plug that you can do at your house. So, and then oftentimes, what you do is you buy additional batteries, then you can switch out and keep mowing, so while the others charge, so you keep a cache of batteries to switch out. The, I think the current highest rating as far as time is, Reddick's got one, they just announced, it's a two-inch, and that's like three and a half acres on a single charge kind of thing. So, and, and the cost of those is actually lower than what we've been paying for the gas mowers. And presuming that we would have a mulch guard instead of having the requirement of a rear discharge, which is obviously what's jacking our price up, is the rear discharge because the, so I wonder, George, if you had any comments on that, but.
Well, you use the rear discharge for safety, as, cutting along the sides of the road. We have paid for a few maintenance jobs over the years, and windows, so the rear discharge kind of eliminates that.
Yeah.
How about, like, a new mulch guard, which keeps it from discharge?
You decide discharge on the trail, because, you know, you're back in the woods, and it does a better job of lowering the leaves off the sidewalk, too, if you could.
When Mike's done with the amendments to the motion, I'd like to comment on electric mowers.
Okay. So I mean, that was, I'm just sharing, that was the, my assumptions. I went into looking at what are the current, what's the current market on mowers, and just put that in that, in the out years. I know we probably won't have another requirement for mower within the next couple of years.
So in the, in the $15,000, does that include the spare battery that rotates out?
That was anticipated.
Okay, that's enough for me.
But we can get it updated. I mean, obviously, that's a long ways out.
That's a long ways out, but.
We would get updated estimates and bring those forward. But it was just putting a placeholder in that. We have, we have a pretty extensive study that you shared with us on the cost differential between gasoline mowers and electric mowers, commercial grade, and it's pretty significant. And not to mention the public health benefits, you're not subjecting your workforce to the fumes from the, and the noise from the gasoline power.
I'm not arguing the purchase of the electric one, I'm just looking at the overall cost in the life span.
Yes.
No, I'd like to have the floor up.
Okay.
I yield my budget time to my fellow council members.
What?
I misunderstood the email. Thank you.
I have you too.
I have any comments? I'm kind of lost right now.
Okay, well, I mean, did you have any questions at all about what, about the draft capital budget was? Share with you all?
This is a little different from what you set out, isn't it?
It's not different from what I set out, this?
That should be what I set out.
I may have added, is this the version I said?
This may be the version from today.
Which you really just added.
The lime truck?
It added the lime truck, and it added tritium.
I had a mine, no bucket truck, I didn't see bucket trucks.
So it's a lime truck, it's a dairy, or whatever, lime truck.
Dairy, lime truck.
Yeah, which we actually ordered a year ago, we just don't think we're going to get it before.
Well, we're going to get it in November, but they told me last week, it seems going to be fall or out.
So, so that's why we make sure it's in here.
Yeah, I think what I had.
Yeah.
What I had also had a couple of security camera, Asbury Park, and Wi-Fi at Asbury Park, but I see no money for it.
Well, you know, that, those things have been discussed before, and I want to come back and make sure that's still a priority to the council. We need to get updated estimates probably on those. I don't know whether we have current enough estimates on that. We were talking to ECG about that at one point in time, but I think it's been long enough ago that we need to update that. So if that's something that we do, and frankly, I mean, you know, it's a, it's a pretty significant capital budget for next year, where some of it is, you know, funds from other sources, but we just, that's, I left it more as a question, George, is that still a priority? So we'll update the figures.
Okay. I wasn't on council at the time when we redid all the security. But didn't you have a discussion about having to change out the cameras at that time when we changed security?
I don't think there are any cameras or anything in the cameras at the park.
Were they planned? Were they discussed? You didn't discuss them as an addition?
They, I thought they were budgeted at one point in time, maybe, but I didn't see they have FY '22.
They're not even working on it.
They're at the, at the maintenance facility.
They're, they're for me, too, we've got two of them.
Oh, we do have two of them?
They're just not even working.
Okay, okay. I recall there was some discussion with ECG about bandwidth and whether we need to run some additional lines.
We've actually opened a, I don't know if it's a ticket, but our account manager at VC3 was having somebody do an updated review of what would be required for the Wi-Fi and the cameras. So I could follow up with her and see if they have an update. That was just a few months ago, when I talked to her about that.
Yeah, I don't want to keep adding to the $5 million.
Yeah.
But some security things aren't necessary.
My inclination was to include them with updated numbers, but I want to make sure y'all were still in line with that. I appreciate that. And then, well, the other thing I had a question about was East Clark Street improvements, because we had initially budgeted $450,000 for that project, based on a curving gutter drainage system with very utilities designed from Robert Jordan. And we had discussed within the last year, I believe, going with an alternative, lower impact design of swales, basically like we've got, say, down Boneell Street or Stone Street or whatever, you know, or most of our streets are ditched swales. So we avoid the cost of that, of the curving gutter, and definitely it rode that less impact, but still, a nice quad rubbed down to the, to a turnaround at the end. Did you want to comment?
That $450,000, wasn't that the amount?
I think initial was $450,000.
Was because of, was planned as part of the development of five acres behind Orange Village. Since we have abandoned that, I see no point in doing it that, to that extent that was originally designed, as it was originally designed.
Certainly since we have other priorities that are moving.
So we do need to get an updated estimate on what that would be. And I wasn't sure, Bill, maybe we need to check with pavement guys, you know, the pavement assessment.
Clark Patterson Lee?
Sorry, yeah, Clark Patterson Lee, about to what extent in their estimate, because Clark Street was obviously the worst street in the region, to what extent that's built, baked into their estimate? And so then some of the annual, you know, they created then a 10-year schedule for us on cost, and so some of that may be baked into that as well. So it might not be that we need an additional $250,000 for Clark Street. We just need to confirm that with them. But that, that was a placeholder, I think, was 250 for East Clark instead of the 450.
Speaking of East Clark Street, when we were talking about streetscape of Emery Street, would we not want to improve that, make that a nice intersection there while we're doing this, whatever we're going to do with East Clark Street, we should actually dress it up at that Emery Street?
Yeah, I think part of the design would be how this that street interface with Emery Street and much.
I mean, we should keep in mind what we were talking about up and down 81. If we're going to do this, so that we won't have to go back and tap something we're doing.
The alignment was supposed to pull it in line with here.
Yeah, basically a straight shot from here across. Yes, so we'll need to get an updated design. And that may be something that we want, I mean, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about getting that done. Who would have? I just mean in terms of which engineering firm or by which would do that design. Depending on Robert Jordan's workload, he may prefer to have it be done by others. Anything else?
For my own clarification, so when we're talking about East Clark, I mean, are there two East Clarks? In the sense that there's the road that exists now that's no longer really servicing those houses? I mean, it's almost impossible really. And, but then there's the, the road that would access the city property. I mean, that's, is that a separate project or is it sort of the same?
So, well, and incidentally, we conveyed to the Downtown Development Authority all of that property on that side of the street, or East Clark and behind Orneville. So it is inclusive of both the work area, the work from this, inclusive of what is existing right away for East Clark Street, which is like a common driveway more than anything, gravelly, whatever, asphalt. And then there is the, the property that we acquired from Curtis Jackson, his, his wife, as well. So within that space, we had a re, we, we would look to realign the road and design a quality road providing access to all those houses down that street. That centers with this, or lines up with this Clark Street. So it is, it is a realignment, not just the, not just the resurfacing of what's there now.
Okay.
I just have a couple of little things. So thinking about the Watcote Street improvements, I would agree that that should be held, put a hold on that until we know exactly what's going to happen with the, the building that was formerly City Hall and, and the, what's going to be built or what could be built. Because it seems ill-judged to make a lot of expensive changes to Watcote Street that may not interface correctly or may need to change. So, I mean, I don't know when anything's going to be changed. Sorry, I don't know when anything's going to be changed with regard to the City Hall building, but it looks like things are moving forward in that direction. I don't know what the timeline would be, but I think we should wait on Watcote Street to make sure that it does integrate and, and as part of the overall plan.
So just a quick update is that, I mean, the Downtown Development Authority is working with historical concepts. And they will bring forward a first initial kind of site plan for what they would propose to do to get our approval for. And if we approve that, then they would move forward with actual design for whatever they were going to propose to be built. And it is assumed that there'll be some realignment of the end of Watcote Street. The extent to which that, we'll see what they propose and make our decision based on.
Well, and also at one point, there was a question about parking and, and people traffic and things like that. So I mean, I think personally, I feel like we should just wait on that and see how that integrates with any plans.
One consideration is whether we would need to do a temporarily, temporarily create a little bit of a change in the trajectory, like with the, you know, to keep traffic flowing while a site is developed.
Sure.
Depending on, again, what site development is proposed. So all that's to, to be determined and we'll see what they come to us with. But just, but yeah, I think that as far as like the permanent change to Watcote kind of needs to fit within an overall plan that we feel is appropriate for the town center area.
And then my second question is, you have citywide complete streets plan and development. Now, we're having a complete streets and trails plan done now by Northeast Georgia Regional Commission. And, and this is five hundred K for, oh, it's not this, it's not this year coming up.
No, that was, we've been thinking more about, it's really more about getting down to developing things than we'll specifically call my attorneys.
Like a bike lane on eighty-one or something like that.
Well, this is all eighty-one. Eighty-one.
And it's okay, Dave, because that's like, that's in the future.
It is a future thing.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, we, we've had a number of conversations, I know council, and in particular is brought forward, the idea of doing things differently within the city to calm traffic or make it more bikeable or bike-friendly, et cetera. And so that's what is envisioned there is getting to implementation of some of those alternative designs of our streetscapes to be more complete streets. And so that, just putting a wedge in the out years for that is what I was envisioning. And then we've got the complete streets for eighty-one, which we can get right on to work with G-DOT on things lightly, bike lane on eighty-one, so that you can save the bike on eighty-one.
So additionally, with this complete streets and trails plan, I think that shortly, comment from the public will be open online. So I, I know that Northeast Georgia Regional Commission, they talked to us about that. And I think Bill was working with them directly on setting something up so that citizens can...
Public donor? Yes, sir.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I hate to throw a monkey into wrencher or wrench into the monkey plan here, but thinking about paving what we're trying to do with a lot of these roads, I'd like to ask Jody, just for the sake of just like takes East Clark Street, there's only a two-inch main going down there. Is that correct?
It's six inches down about.
Oh, it is a six? When was it replaced?
It's just been in there six inches for a few, several years.
Several years?
Probably fifteen years ago.
Okay.
But it only goes down about a hundred feet or so, then it goes to a two-inch.
Then it goes to a two-inch?
Yes.
I mean, what my question is, is when we're doing all these roads and stuff like that, is there any roads or any plumbing or, or, you know, water lines or sewer lines that may need to be replaced before those roads are redone?
Coming up on thirty years old, so I would recommend it be changed when you do the street.
That's...
I mean, I really would.
And I'm, I'm just saying that because there may be some roads that we need to consider that same situation on. And I hate to throw monkey, you know, a wrench into the, what we're trying to get done here, but it's something we need to consider because if we put, and put money into these roads and you cover them up, you're going to pay heck to undo them.
Now, that's a good point. And we do have, sorry, we do also have in the capital budget the estimates for the waterline improvements that we initially hoped to get funding for from the state on some of that. But we do have money allocated for waterline improvements. And some of that's going to be driven priority-wise, I would think, by public safety with that. Did I always say it wrong?
Advestis, Advestis block.
Yeah, yeah. And that's particularly around, I think, that South Oxford area, Bono Street, Comunion Street, that area. And then move on to other areas, but if that line, absolutely. And I don't know if that line runs, the line over here, Jody, does that run down the street?
It just runs straight down the street and dead ends, but it's thirty-plus years old. I mean, I've been here thirty-six years and it was there when I came here. But I do know from repairs, part of it's six inch and then the other part's two.
About a hundred feet worth, six inch.
But it's just thirty-plus years old. And we, we talked about that when we originally designed for the subdivision and everything. If you remember, it was all in the plans to replace that.
So I don't, I'm not sure, Bill, if that was contemplated in the initial, or Jody, in the initial discussion with Carter and Sluke about the, the proposal of three and a half million dollars worth of water projects that we had hoped to be able to do?
Yeah, I don't think that was in it because we were still sitting on what we're going to do there. Nobody's decided.
Got you.
What to do.
So we'll need to get some estimates on that. Okay, thanks. Appreciate it, Jim. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. On line forty, that two hundred thousand on my paper goes on after six hundred thousand at one time. So is that, it's not on, is that, is that coming out to six? I thought that was supposed to be for the initial, what do you call it? We weren't, that's not going to, that was just on the two hundred thousand. How many do we six hundred thousand?
So what I did was there, put a couple of placeholders in the out years for what might we call phase two or phase three of downtown, of the town center development. If we do find that there are other projects that we have parties that want to engage with us and do something that we want them to do, then we would need to have funds to be able to do some of the preliminary architectural and engineering work for those projects. So it's again, just kind of placeholder in those out years. I think that's twenty-six, twenty-seven?
All right, twenty-fifty, twenty-five.
Yeah. So that's what that is. It's anticipating something that hasn't, I mean, we've got a concept plan that was shared with everybody. We talked about for the town center and we, and the Downtown Development Authority is working with the college and with others on this kind of phase one that they'll, that will come to us as a proposal, which we need that two hundred thousand in of part twenty-three. And then this is, this would be like, let's say someone wanted to do a, you know, boutique in or bed and breakfasts or something in the town center. And we wanted to design what that would look like, how that would interface with other things in the town center. We might have to put up the initial funds for that. And then seller to this, get that reimbursed in the financing of the project.
It would just be helpful to, to us if we had that information. You know, we vote on things, but we would like to have all the information so we know what we're voting on.
Yeah, what does it say in the comments there? I can't remember what it says.
Funds may be reimbursed by that. I don't get tired about this.
Yes.
Destruction, right?
Yes, sorry, I should have, yeah. Yeah, I should have gone and expressed that those were, those were just anticipating there might be an extension of town center development that we would need to...
Right. Usually, I think, we usually have some type of explanation of what these things are on the low term. Therefore, we would have to come up with a whole lot of questions and take a lot of time. Thanks.
Any other? Yes, man? Did you have any questions?
I do.
Yes, sir.
You gave up your time.
I gave up my time and I'm taking it back because
I gave my time.
I've read that new, that email as to we were supposed to respond to you separately. And that's what I intended to do. But I've developed some questions as we've gone along.
Sure, sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Regarding the mower, I don't think there's any been more vocal advocate for electrifying the city than I have been, certainly not anymore so. I have an electric blower, battery-operated blower. I got a black battery-operated hedge trimmer. I have a battery-operated weed eater. And I have a battery-operated lawnmower. And the battery-operated lawnmower is not what it's cracked up to be. So I strongly recommend we do a powerful lot of research on electric motor, mower, before we spend fifteen thousand dollars on one. Because they will not underload, apparently the time they'll run is not under load. And it, especially on someplace where it might get a little high. I have to start up here and then work my way down with that electric mower. And so I would, I would strongly recommend we not jump into that too quickly. I don't even need, I would like to see in this budget some money provided for whatever the new comp plan comes up with, because we'll be taking information for the public hopefully. If we're not going to do that, then let's just check the boxes, satisfy DCA, save everybody a lot of time and energy and moveon.com. Because I don't want to spend a lot of time and ask the public to spend their time and energy and thought processes. And we do it just like the ones, the last two. And you can go through there and we hadn't done a third of it. That's a waste of time. That's a waste of human resources and a waste of money. And if the Northeast Georgia just do it and check the boxes and satisfy DCA's government requirements, if we're not going to put money in there to do what the public wants us to do, let's don't waste our time. I'm adamant about that. Complete streets. Northeast Georgia may be doing complete streets, but Northeast Georgia is not an implementation agency. Atkins is an implementation agency or will be, depending on what, whatever. So let's not make any decision based on the fact that Northeast Georgia is doing a complete street study. Because there may be some practicalities in there that, that just don't work. So that, let's not take any money out and say, well, they're doing us a study. That's my thoughts. This is, the comp plan and all that sort of stuff, what Jeff, the point he made, I think is a fantastic point. It's just like the, the lights on the, the east end, the north end, we were talking about one time. The right hand needs to know what the left hand doing, or it's going to cost a lot of money. DDA, I don't even want to talk about those, that end of town. The five acres is part of the driving and increase process. That property, if they're not going to develop it, needs to revert back to the city ownership, not stay in the DDA ownership. Because if we're going to try to do things with it, then it needs to be, in my opinion, and our attorney could probably tell us more thoroughly or correctly, that to keep it clean, if we're going to do things on it, it needs to be our property, not the DDA's property.
So to that, Jim, when I was still sitting on DDA and that, it may have changed since...
I still can't hear you, Laura.
Sorry. I don't know.
I know it's aggravating, but stay, stay close to the mic, please, ma'am.
Um, when I was on DDA, we were having, since I'm also on sustainability committee and we were talking about the GOSB grant, one of the important things with getting the GOSB grant is having contributions from partners. And material contributions are really important. And so we were having, we were talking in DDA about using that five acres as a material contribution that we could show in the GOSB grant, them giving it to the city for use as part of the trail, so long as they could then integrate it into the downtown development with, you know, connectivity to the downtown area and the trail. So with like a trail stretch to hop on there. Does that make sense? Am I making sense?
Somewhat.
Okay. So, so there have been conversations, at least when I was still on DDA, about using that five acres since it's not going to be developed as a material contribution, which we could show on paper for the GOSB grant. So, so meshing with what you're saying, if you see what I mean.
So they need to keep the property. Is that what you're saying?
So if they, well, they don't necessarily need to keep it, but they need to visibly give it to us for trail use, so that they're a separate legal body and then that will count as a part.
Which is exactly why I said we need to have it back in our...
When they need it back to us, that will be their gift back to us, their contribution to the overall project. And I, I have not heard of any.
That's the first I've heard about that. That's what George was talking about. That's what he's talking about. The left hand does not know what the right hand's doing. And we're going to be ending up trying to vote on whatever price, whatever number you guys come up with to proceed with whatever plan that they have. And I, I have yet to hear anything I can vote for.
On the, your speech specific to the town center.
Whatever, whatever the DDA has put forward thus far, I could not vote for. That I understand. I, because I don't know, I had one meeting with Mike in Jonathan, what, four years ago?
It was, it was...
Two years.
Two years.
Had to be more than that because we had COVID for two years.
Just before, just before COVID, I know they were talking to the council about the concept.
About three years ago that I had any information at all from the DDA. And I wasn't impressed. I'm sorry. I just wasn't. There's a beautiful opportunity over there. Fabulous, fantastic. They'll put this town on the map. I'm sorry. It's just not there. Thank you.
Real quickly, Jim, on the comp plan, the schedule for having the, excuse me, updated conference of plan approved is February of 2023. I think by February twenty-three, twenty-three, we have to at least submit it. Not, maybe that's when it's approved by DCA. I'm trying to remember. But anyway, the point is that the, the output from the, the conference of plan update process won't really be available to us until we're doing the FY24 budget planning. And I wholly agree that we need to be looking at alignment with, I mean, there should be alignment between what's in the conference of plan and what we're putting down in our capital budget. And so, yes, just, just saying, timing wise, we can't, there's nothing we can really do with the FY23 budget.
The steering committee will be in, put in there all the meetings that they were in the past. And we can make our own notes. and we can make our own notes. It doesn't, we don't not have to wait for any kind of official confirmation. I understand it has to be done by then for the DCA, but we can move forward on a sketchier basis.
Sure. I'm just saying, we, we don't have any plan against yet until, and we won't until we've gotten the FY twenty-three budget.
Well, I, I just need to be assured that that's what we're going to do because otherwise I don't want to waste everybody's time and energy because I just don't.
I mean, I, sorry, I just, I'm not sure we could say one hundred percent. I don't know what, what might come up that we haven't discussed or that we're not moving, trying to move forward with already. And certainly if somebody comes up with something brilliant, we would be stupid not to take that on. But I don't know what.
When's the last time you looked at comprehensive plan?
Looked at our comprehensive plan? It's been, uh, four years. If you were to, you were to.
My point is.
Fortunately, it was just a few months ago when we were talking about we need to update the comprehensive plan. And so I was looking at the comprehensive plan, including the short-term work program. Because my understanding was that was the only piece.
Well, I'm belaboring a point, I know, but you know, we got the fourteen studies upstairs and we got the, what do I have a minute, uh, which begin, as I recall, with you and Eric sending out a questionnaire which had a very high response, as I recall, one of the highest rates of responses of that type of thing I've ever heard of. And I wonder how many of those things we've done. You know, that's, that's my only point. We sit, we sit up here and we, if we talk about these things and we get the public involved, they spend their time and their energy. Look at, don't you recall how many people with those charrettes? We build this place up, they're standing alone and lonely at the old City Hall. And we put it on a shelf and it gathers dust. That's not fair to them at all, not in any stretch of imagination. And you know, I just, if that's the way it's going to be, then I just want everybody to know that I object to it.
Well, I do too. I hope, I hope we're going to move forward.
And if we're going to create the comp plan, then let's create it as a tool for us to do, make decisions with. That's all I'm asking.
Absolutely, absolutely. I agree.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the capital budget? And I know the operating budget was a lot more.
You said it all.
I don't know if anybody had any questions or comments on that. If you had a chance to ask any specific items, I know we were trying to update a few things for you all, including the allocation of the administrative staff to the other accounts.
Personally, I thought we were only going to be capital budget, so I didn't go into it.
Just want to get the space if there was anybody having that.
But they have to.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, I think. Okay, were there invoices, is there, was, remember the invoices? Anybody have any questions about invoices? Do you have a chance to look at the invoices here? Yes, sir. Go ahead, George.
We'll go down to A D, A D D. Those are the contributors, right?
Yeah, that's what I, yes.
And we got two for the public work vehicles. People qualified to handle that.
Well, these are the, these are the ones that literally take you step by step through the clauses, right?
We also say to train them those through ECG to, once a year, we have a training session on the A Ds. All electrical.
We have our four East Clarks, that's the most important place we ought to have.
We, we do, yes.
Yeah, I figured they're trained, for sure. I just wondered what's our public work, people trained to our.
We do, because you have to have them on a bucket truck also because electrical shocks.
Yeah, okay. No problem, my concern is about whether we had to have a training for.
I don't want any secondhand sewer cameras, that's all I have.
Yeah, because that, the, 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 the camera is a half of what we had the budget for. We budget fifteen thousand, now that's just a camera, now it's, you only cost eight thousand?
I thought it was eighty-two we had budget with Mr. Bill. We actually had to add a little to that.
He don't need fifteen. He don't need fifteen.
That's what I remember. We looked at the budget, Mr. Bill, and we actually had to add a little bit to it.
I'm saying one time we had, we were kind of looking about distance because it was fifteen thousand.
We priced a jet or a little bass jet on the trailer was fifteen or eighteen thousand.
Yeah, we did talk about jet clean, uh, for cleaning out the.
Yeah, to clean out, to clean out, the cameras just.
We borrow, because we typically borrow from Covington in the past.
Hook up and just kind of send.
Or they come over and do it. And we were talking about whether.
But we had priced that, I think that's what Mr. George and Jill are talking about. We had our price for a mobile, just a small one, you know, jet, it was like fifteen or eighteen, I think. But the camera was only, it was eight thousand something.
Three thousand P S I. Jet would do what we need. And probably, probably twelve, fourteen.
Yes. Saying that's what I think y'all thinking that we had the fifteen thousand for, or wasn't for.
We decided not to get that.
Yeah, y'all decided not to get that.
But you do with the sewer camera, right?
Yes, sir, we, and we've got it already.
You got one now?
Yes, sir. Incidentally, I did put in the capital budget and it may not be enough, Jody, but is maybe we need to hire somebody to come in and help us do some cleanup of some of our ditches and drains because we've got several places where just leaves have accumulated or pipes have become blocked and we've got ditches that are, you know, more run than they should. So I think, I envision that that's something, that it's a bill that needs to be paid. So it's in the capital budget, if y'all wonder, under sewer drain, or stormwater drains. Stormwater infrastructure improvements. So a little bit more than just having Tracy Thomas do our report. We need to actually do some maintenance work on our, on our storm drains.
That's a little high, I think.
Did y'all see, done you, is there any police vehicles still out? Okay. Was out there or?
So Jeff, what I was assuming is it'd be in addition to the twenty thousand every year we spend on keeping our program up to date, that we would have additional thirty thousand of maintenance on the storm drains, which we include in some cases having to excavate or.
Yeah, you may have to replace some of them, they're too clogged.
Yes.
And you're like, and that, so that, that's, I would say a reasonable figure.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions on the invoices? George, you look like you might have some question. It's a beauty to be back in person, though.
If you're sore, I'm not going to ask.
All right, I don't believe we actually have anything for executive session. So with that, we can just get motion to adjourn.
Still move.
Second.
I'm trying to say hi. Thank you all.
Don't wait on anybody else.
If you want to give anybody a chance to.